Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our launch of the 2024 Sustainable Schools Top Energy Performing School Boards Report. I'm Katia Osaken, I'm the program manager of the Sustainable Schools program. Our work is supported by our program sponsors, Train and Enbridge. You will hear a bit more about them in just a moment. Sustainable Schools is a program of the Climate Challenge Network, and the technical direction for this program is provided by Interleak Consulting. A couple of quick notes before we start. For any questions during the presentation, please use the Q and A option on Zoom. And we'll have a panel discussion later on. We'll take audience questions during that time. After the webinar, as usual, we'll follow up with responses to any questions that we didn't get to. And finally, we are recording this webinar, and we'll share the recording with everyone over the next few days. I will pass this over now to Ian Jarvis, our executive director, to start with the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Katia, and to everyone joining us from the West. Good morning and to everybody else, good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time from your busy schedules to join us for this conversation today. As Katia mentioned, we begin all Climate Challenge Network events by acknowledging the ancestral and unceded territory of the First Nations people, the Inuit, the Métis, who share these lands with us. We're meeting today, as you know, on a virtual platform, but I'm speaking from Toronto, the traditional homes of the Huron-Wendat, the Haudenosaunee, the Anishinaabe, and the Mississaugas of the Credit River, who actually hold the treaty with the city of Toronto, as you may know. Our work is aimed towards being good stewards of the environment, and we sincerely hope that this work contributes to our common responsibility in that area. So again, thank you for joining us today. As Katia mentioned, we're going to dig deeply into the actual energy performance of Ontario's 72 school boards and approximately 5,000 school buildings. But we're very happy that six other provinces from across Canada have joined us for this call today. And we'll be talking over the course of this, how much of the patterns and the storylines that we see coming out of the data are repeated across North America. And we have some thoughts towards the end, hoping that you'll consider joining this work and expanding the benefits beyond Ontario going forward. So let's go to the next slide, please, if we could, Katia. I want to speak a bit about our sponsors in terms of the kinds of maybe new relationships that are evolving around this whole response that we have to collectively make to the climate crisis, to the risks of climate change. With Enbridge Gas, they've been working with us for more than five years now, not just on bringing this program into being, but also on designing new incentive programs, helping establish the achievable savings potential for natural gas, working together on cohort projects. We value very highly our conversations with Enbridge as we work together on the challenges and the opportunities surrounding energy efficiency. We see them as great ongoing partners. And a special word, Vivian, I know you're on the call today. So Vivian Lee-Grasby, please do reach out to her. But Train is our first industry sponsor for Sustainable Schools. And for us, the conversations we've had and the relationship that we're building exemplifies how we see all the parties working together on a go-forward basis to, again, address the very real challenges of how do we move to a low-carbon economy in a manageable period of time, as we'll touch on later. We are running out of time with respect to that. We're working with Train on fairly innovative approaches to application of air-source heat pumps to school facilities. And I'll mention that research project coming up in just a moment. But so the conversations are more around those kind of new working relationships between groups such as Climate Challenge Network, between individual school boards and industry. How do we work together to tackle challenges, to take advantage of opportunities, and to actually drive down greenhouse gas emissions? We're honoured to have a global leader like Train part of this. Many of you will be aware of Train's gigaton, gigaton commitment to greenhouse gas emissions reduction on a global scale. We love working with leaders, and we regard Train as a leader in that space. And I'm sure that they're working with many of you, and that you'll be having conversations coming out of this webinar. So again, thanks to both of our sponsors, you make this possible. And again, we honour the relationships we have with you. Next slide, please. So Sustainable Schools, many of you by now will be familiar with the program. We created the program back in 2007. It is a program of the nonprofit Climate Challenge Network. We're working with data and school boards and school districts across North America. The big idea around Sustainable Schools is how can we use the increasing availability of good utility data and building information through public reporting in Ontario and other jurisdictions across North America? How can we use that to drive efficiency improvements, to identify opportunities, to verify that they work? You can track everything about Sustainable Schools. You'll find it's a rich resource, the website address is there. And again, the principle that we're going to be sharing with you today is that schools have a rational amount of energy they need to perform the functions that they do. So energy targets for individual schools that we can roll up into individual school boards is how we come to the point of recognizing the most energy-efficient school boards in Ontario and in future across North America. This annual report, it's our eighth year of presenting this information to people. Every year, the story gets richer. We learn more about what makes the more efficient boards more efficient and what others can do to improve. And increasingly, working with partners like Enbridge and Train, we're identifying gaps in knowledge, gaps in understanding areas where school boards, industry, government, and utilities working together can fill knowledge gaps, develop best practices, develop guidance that we can all use to help advance the cause. So next slide. So today, we've got a very specific agenda. We want to go back to context, the why. Why does this matter? This is not a presentation of data and information for interest, and then we go back to normal. There is urgency, there is opportunity, and there is collective and individual responsibility around addressing the climate crisis. We want to touch on that context, which I will in just a moment. Then we're going to look back three years, back prior to COVID, and what's happened to energy use of Ontario's schools over that period of time. We want to then move on to the drumroll of the day, which is the 2024 results, which are the leading school boards, and what is the achievable savings potential? If we look at all the schools across Ontario, what is the opportunity for further reduction in energy use and greenhouse gas emissions and in utility costs going forward? So that is the heart of our annual reporting. We then want to talk about planning. You know, if that's the potential for reduction, how do our school boards, how should they go about identifying what to do? And in our view, more importantly, how to get it done? So we'd be talking about planning. We want to touch a bit upon some of the research that we're doing, especially the new project we have with Natural Resources Canada, looking at new school performance. Then, as Katia mentioned, we have our panel discussion. We have three leaders from leading school boards, and we have some very specific questions to ask them. And we hope that you, as the audience, will join in that conversation. So this is very pragmatic stuff. From a school board's perspective, how do we move forward? And then at the end, I'd like to speak to school boards and districts across Ontario, outside of Ontario, a large number of industry players that are on this call today. And we have specific messaging for governments and utility companies. So all of this is intended to lead to action. It's very forward-looking. It's how do we get to where we all need to go from here? So that's our plan for the day. Let's go to the next slide, please. So let me start here. So the idea of urgency, opportunity, and responsibility. This is the context for the day, that this is not, again, about sharing information. This is about how do we use information to plan going ahead. Within Canada, we see rising home insurance premiums. I just got my renewal. It's 60% higher than what I've been paying for the past 15 years. We see food prices going up. We love to blame the soap of the grocery chains. But climate change is increasingly a driver of higher food prices. We see smoke days. We see drought in the prairies, which is the center point of food supply for the country. So we can assume that leads in. As of the end of April, 95% of the prairies was somewhere between D1 and D4, between moderate and extreme areas of drought, and for several years in a row. So within Canada, we can feel the effects. We see the floods in the Maritimes. We see the fires in Northern Ontario, in Alberta, in British Columbia. In the United States, I have a friend living in Oakland, an executive of one of the large hospital groups in California. She can't get home insurance anymore. The insurance companies aren't providing insurance against fires, against flooding, against extreme weather conditions. We're all aware of 2013, the worst season ever, when more than 100 people burned to death in Hawaii. We're familiar with this, we're seeing this. The pictures you see on here are the drying-up reservoir on the right, both are from British Columbia. On the left is the fire that reached Kelowna, B.C., in the Okanagan. Problematic for winegrowers. We lost a whole season, which is their livelihoods. But Dr. Penny Ballam is the chair of Vancouver Coastal Health. She was a keynote in one of our events last year. Previous deputy minister of health, previous city manager of the city of Vancouver. And her keynote, she entitled "Running Out of Time", and talked about when she saw Kelowna burning, that was the first time she really felt climate anxiety. So we're seeing the signs, we're seeing the signs all around us. And the argument is we're not responding quickly enough. And those signs in the southern hemisphere are even more acute, where food, water, livelihood over vast areas is threatened. And we could expect that to lead to migration on a scale that we haven't seen so far. We think we've got problems on the southern border of the United States right now, and the southern borders of Europe. We've seen nothing in terms of the scale of migration and the consequent problems arising from that. So once again, we see the signs, we're not responding quickly enough today. This webinar is a call to action, and we look forward to ongoing conversation with everybody as we move down that path. 2030 is coming, it's the first major milestone with respect to targets relating to greenhouse gas emissions reductions. At this point in time, we're on the wrong trajectory. Emissions are going up rather than down. We'll share that data today, but it's common to everywhere we look in North America. We'll miss those targets by a wide margin. And if we miss those, we'll miss 2040, we'll miss 2050, and bad things happen. The opportunity, the responsibility, we're going to talk about that. There's utility cost savings that are large, but there's a common responsibility of every organization, including school boards and districts, to help close that gap. And again, today's a call to action for everybody to join with us in taking action and moving forward. Next slide, please. So interesting three-year period we've been through. We've come through the pandemic, largely at the other end of that right now. And watching energy use trends through that is important and intriguing. Can we go to the results, please? And many of you will have seen these, this is standard reporting template we use. It's, we call them tornado diagrams. Every horizontal bar on each of these charts is a school board. They're not all in the same position on all three areas of energy use. But if we start with the middle one, your school board in Ontario is in there, and we'll be happy to add school boards from outside of the province to this list. So every horizontal line is one school board. The green ones at the top are the ones showing savings over the period from 2018-19 as a baseline, going forward three years to 2021-22. So we're looking over a three-year period here. The green ones showing savings, the red ones are showing increases. The box at the top shows the net effect. Electricity, to us surprisingly, showed significant increase, significant savings over that period. Net 3.1%. Still a number of school boards where the electricity went up. We got a pretty clean grid, not as clean as British Columbia. I know those boards from B.C. dialing in, but a fairly clean grid. So those savings contributed 1,450 tonnes of CO2 emissions. We had 70 boards reporting, we had data issues with the other two. So this is 70 out of 72 boards. Thermal energy looks quite the opposite. The net here of the increases, you can see far more boards showed net increases, but some still showed savings. Net increase of 4.6%, costing us almost 24,000 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions. And the combined effect of that you see on the left-hand side, which adds electricity and gas together to look at the big picture. So overall, over three years, our emissions have gone up by approximately 1.8%, 22,000 tonnes. Going back to the call to action, we're going in the wrong direction. We're looking, Canada's looking for a 41% reduction by 2030 in greenhouse gas emissions due to buildings. And at this point, we're going up, not down. Hence, hence the opportunity, hence the responsibility. Next slide, please. There were interesting times in Ontario. There was a big investment in portable HEPA filters that would clean the air. You can see in terms of the bottom left-hand corner, with approximately 100,000 of these filters deployed across Ontario, this is the kind of electricity increase. So we would argue, in fact, the conclusion is that the electricity savings we saw there are despite the addition of this equipment. So it makes the electrical news even better, and again, contrasts with what we saw with respect to gas consumption. Our belief is that as smoke days come in, these devices are going to be increasingly valuable as one way to hopefully keep kids in the classroom. Next slide, please. And again, this recording and the slides will be available after this, so you don't need to put this down. But the idea that every year of performance data tells a story that we can learn from. You can see that in the first year, that's when we saw the first signs of the pandemic. Lots of school closures, significant reductions in both electricity and natural gas consumption, which have largely been offset over the coming, over the following years, in part because of response to COVID. We run ventilation systems longer. We aimed, boards aimed to increase the amount of outside air that they were putting through the schools in hopes of mitigating the effects of the pandemic. But the end result, you can see on the right-hand side over that three-year period, that's the 1.8% increase in overall energy use that we've seen. Next slide. So again, drumroll time is for this year's report, which relates to the 21-22 school year. Which are the most efficient school boards? And we get asked a lot about what's the math, how do you determine that? How do you do that math? Again, Sustainable Schools begins with targets, comparing elementary schools with top quartile energy usage for elementary school type, same for secondary schools, same for administration-type buildings. So every one of the approximately 5,000 buildings is benchmarked against that top quartile target, and that's the derivation of the savings potential. And when we roll up all the individual buildings for each board, that's the derivation of which the top energy-performing school boards are. And the methodology you can find at sustainableschools.ca. Take a look if you have thoughts about how to make it more accurate, more reliable. We'd love to hear from people. Adjustments are made for weather differences, for heating system types, for portable classrooms, and so on. But the methodology has stood the test of time, and that's the basis on which we recognize the top boards. And the next slide, here it is. We get a lot of calls before, and we generally let people come to this. So these are the top performing boards. And we're delighted to have Steve from Holton Catholic District School Board on our panel for today, gone from on the far, on the right-hand side, the previous year ranking of number three to number one. Lots of lessons to learn here. We only recognize the top 20, but the other 52 boards. We get a lot of calls after this, where we're happy to share with you what your ranking was. We're here to celebrate the best, not shame anybody else. Happy to share the ranking and our guidance on how your data can be used to point you in the right direction to where the biggest savings opportunities have been found. There's interesting patents here that we're not going into. The northern boards did particularly well. We congratulate those boards that the third column from the left show double-digit steps up in the ranking. So again, multiple stories within this, but here are our top 20. Congratulations to you. You're both an inspiration and instruction to everybody else as to what are the good practices that you're deploying to help move forward. And that's the role of Sustainable Schools, is to capture those best practices, share them widely, and track the improvements from year to year. Next slide. When we look at all of the performance of, again, all of the 4,700, whatever the number is, of schools and compare them against those top quartile standards, it is, in our view, the most reliable estimate of achievable energy savings potential for the K to 12 school sector. So taking every building and moving it to its appropriate top quartile electricity use intensity, and the same for natural gas, generates the fact if we get everybody to the top quartile. So the ones already better than that, already above the top 25%, we're not assuming any further improvement there, even though you're typically still making improvements. But 463 million kilowatt-hours a year, or about 25, a little over 25% of current usage is the potential for electricity reductions. This, for the ISO who is on this call today, and for electric utilities, this is a very reliable estimate of what is readily achievable, predominantly through operational improvements. In terms of natural gas, the numbers even larger, more than 37% of gas consumption can be saved just by moving everybody. And it's all weather-normalized, moving everybody to the top quartile. So over $100 million a year of savings potential. And we'll talk later about the economic case for doing this is almost as strong as the environmental case. And the environmental case is we can lower greenhouse gas emissions by 36% just by running the buildings we've already got and the systems we've already got more efficiently. And 237,000 tonnes of greenhouse gas emissions is a lot. It's a noble cause, it's an appropriate cause, and it's one that we're encouraging everybody to join us in. Next slide, please. So how do we get there from here? All of the Ontario school boards are putting the finishing touches right now to the provincially mandated by regulation, energy conservation and demand management plans that we have to put together every five years. But the principles of planning, there's nothing magic about the 2024 plans or the 2019 plans. 2030 does matter, so these plans take us to 2029. We're looking at 2030, we're preoccupied by 2030, and bending the curve of emissions to meet Canada's 2030 targets. There's so many reasons for us all to join forces and do our individual parts towards that. So planning looks a bit like, the next slide, please, Katia. It really starts today with making the commitment. There are so many reasons, so many other priorities, so many other things that get in the way. We cannot think of anything more important than collectively responding to the climate crisis. So the commitment we suggest for your consideration today is meet the Sustainable Schools target. It's not particularly aggressive. You could do better. Boards are already doing better. But if everybody gets to the top quartile, that 36% emissions reduction is available. Every board we've ever looked at, by taking that action and looking at the costs and making the improvements, they're always cash-positive within 10 years. The net present value of doing this work is economically viable. So there's no financial reason not to do this. School boards, above all, with students, with teachers, with communities that they're in, need to lead by example. And as, if you'll forgive me, as the temperature rises on the climate crisis, you can expect, whether it's carbon tax or some other mechanism, there will be costs and regulations associated with the escalating concern about climate change. And you need to future-proof now, you need to plan now to be ready to deal with those issues. The next slide. And if you're wondering what to do, 1, 2, and 3, items 1, 2, and 3 on this list, which are simple things. My guess would be every board, every school on this call is aware of these things. You know, the building automation system, you cannot manage a school board portfolio without good BAS functionality. Operations scheduling, we've got lots of evidence now to say if we just run our schools during the periods of time that they're actually in use, the savings are enormous. We're looking at HVAC systems being the biggest energy users, and yet we're not sufficiently testing them, refurbishing them, and rebalancing them so that they'll work properly. Those three things will contribute the lion's share of the savings we looked at previously. They're cost-effective, they're cash-positive, they just need the time and effort. Then, cost-effective retrofits fall into place, there's all kinds of things that have a positive financial rate of return. And within all of your planning, decarbonization readiness has to be there. And we know of boards that are looking at heat pump solutions, electrification, decarbonization. So we're getting ready for the low-carbon future on the way. But this slide, perhaps above all, is if we all do this, we get to 36% emissions reductions. So we're going to think about how to plan around getting this done. Next slide, please. We took a poll last year, so had a similar conversation in this webinar last year. Many of you were on this call. And you can read this, we asked the audience, and we got a wonderful response. Just about everybody on the call took the time to answer the questions about, from a technical standpoint, what are the challenges? And look at this, improving operations and maintenance, people get that. You know, the operate, how we operate, how we run, how we maintain our schools is the biggest single opportunity that we have there, that Sustainable Schools is looking to help boards with. And question two, what are the biggest challenges to the organization? Lack of time and resources. So we want to play out that logic. This can be addressed with proper business cases. If we can save $100 million a year, and just in Ontario, how can we not afford to put in place the right resources to be able to make the projects happen? This lack of funding is in there. If we can get a good positive return and save $109 million. So we think on the right-hand side, these are the challenges that are most important to address. But they're readily addressable if we make the commitment. Next slide, please. And this is my colleague, Vice President Julian Henderson, who looks at the organizational side. We look at the technical side, looks at the organizational awards. If, like organizational alignment, making sure that design and construction works with operations and maintenance to get better collective outcomes, senior management and trustee governance approval, financial commitment, the whole measurement and reporting. If you're not tracking this, these usage levels, how can you possibly manage them? So the organizational issues we see is So the organisational issues we see is the biggest, that leads into capacity building. Who's responsible for what? Because it's organisation wide, it's not just the poor folks in the facilities department. And what new resources do you need? And within that, we're saying all the industry players on this call today and every one of your service providers out there is a potential partner. Let's build those new relationships where industry can be helping school boards to meet their goals. There's no such thing as a five-year plan, it's five-one-year plans. You have to plan year by year, otherwise we fall far behind. And if we can get this done, we can get to our twenty thirty of energy and emissions reduction goals. And again, this is the the challenge, the Climate Challenge Network puts out to organisations everywhere. We need to do this, let's get it done. Next slide. So that really is the lion's share of our content. Let's just share with you some of the things we're doing today because we will be the Sustainable Schools program is doing now. Because we'll be reaching out to many of you to take part in these these initiatives. Next slide. So we always have a number of cohort projects. We're in the middle of phase two of a strategic energy management, an organisational capacity project with a number of school boards and also with capital projects, high efficiency rooftop HVAC unit replacement projects. We're in the second phase of those now. We started that work in twenty twenty-two and those reports, the original reports are on our website and you can, you'll see the the webinar coming up later this year on updating those reports with how did the boards fare after this? And as mentioned earlier, we're working with Trane and other organisations on a high-performance air source heat pump application guide. Many boards see this, as we do, as a key part of decarbonisation and the intent is to provide guidance on how do you evaluate it, how do you compare it with alternatives? And how do you effectively put it into place? Next slide, please. And we're working with Natural Resources Canada, collecting data from school boards across the country, from B C, from Manitoba, from Nova Scotia, from Ontario, on schools built since twenty fifteen. So are we getting the new ones right? So if we get the new ones right, then then at least we can focus on the thousands, the tens of thousands of additional schools that are out there. This is the current state of the benchmark chart for those. And while many at the top are remarkably energy efficient, we're showing much better standards than we've seen before. There's still brand new schools being built that are remarkably inefficient. You see that in the numbers below. Again, every one of those is a new school. It's it's electricity and it's it's thermal energy consumption. You can see the table at the bottom suggests we are getting better, but we're not getting better enough. I love that. Not better enough is my new favourite expression. Next slide. So getting to the panel. The the key of everything the Climate Challenge Network does is not just going around there to see who's saying good things and sounds like they've got it right and it sounds like they've got good practices. We identify in every building sector we work in, in healthcare and education, post-secondary, in municipalities. Where are the most energy efficient, not just individual buildings, but also whole groups portfolios? Where are the owners? Where are the sectors that have examples? And that's what we try to bring to these events to have conversations with is who are the top performers? Let's see if we can tease out what they're doing differently and package it and share it with everybody else. So learn from the best, share with the rest is kind of the motto we run with. Next slide, please. And I'm just delighted you'll see some a new face here and Katie, welcome from Grand Erie and it's great to see the progress that you're making. Both Kayla and Steve you've seen before and Steve, we just recognised a moment ago as number one in the rankings this year, up from number one. Simcoe County School Board is number ten in the rankings and and held that place over the past two years and Simcoe County has come from a long way back. They worked their way up the benchmark chart through what we we learn from all of these these panelists and this is the information we look to share. So if if we can mic on for Kayla, Steve and Katie and we got some specific questions, but please, in the audience, there's there's a lot to learn from from our three panelists. Please take the time to type into the Q and A, whatever questions you have. Katia rules and we'll pick the ones that fit into the flow of the conversation now, but we will commit to respond to every question that we that we see after the webinar. And I, Steve, got to start with you because for at least this year, you're number one and you've been there before. What do you think sets the Holton Catholic District School Board apart? In terms of achieving that number one spot, you've been participating with us for a while. Is it the design of your school, the age of the schools, the operations of the schools, the management practices? What within the Holton Catholic Board do you think it is that that gets you to the top of the charts as we see today?
Well, yeah, thanks Ian and and thanks Katia. Very humbled by all this today. I appreciate the recognition. To answer your question, Ian, I would say it's all of the above, actually. There is a little bit of everything in there, obviously. Centralised BAS operation, as you mentioned before, is the foundation upon which all energy kind of efficiency is based. It's not really possible to run schools in efficient manner without building automation. Certainly at Holton Catholic, we have an advantage of a newer portfolio of schools, generally speaking, probably compared to most boards. Geographically, we're in a fairly tight area, which makes my life a little bit easier as well, going from school to school. There are other things, of course, we are heavy and I've always been big proponents of interval metering and monitoring and alarming, which is the biggest tool that I use day to day to keep our schools running efficiently. Can go into that more later and certainly sticking to our design principles, even in the face of challenging financial times with our new builds. We have long built elementary and secondary schools in with certain features, certain ways, air conditioning, et cetera. And we've been able to maintain that all the way through up to today and moving forward. Obviously, our, with carbon mitigation on the top of everybody's mind, the designs will be evolving over the next little while. But certainly over the last number of years, we've been able to continue our design with their new schools and keep them running efficiently as with the rest of our portfolio.
That's a great question from Andrew Cutbright. Thanks, Andrew. Pick out of the other one thing, what's the one takeaway you'd offer to every board there? What's the one thing? You can't do everything at once. What should they focus on? Hard question.
For me, is that was for me? Yeah. I guess I think we are assuming that centralised building automation is again, the foundation upon which this is all based. So if we take that at face value and assume that that is kind of a given, I could not do the my job as well as I do without the interval metering and alarming. We we have hitched our wagon to a certain vendor for that. It's been trying at times, but it is definitely worth the effort for electricity, gas and water. And the the interesting things that you can do with it, whether it's separating out portables or panels, sub-metering water and and gas. All of that in real time and having it alarmed for certain thresholds, different thresholds throughout the year is the most important tool I use.
Right, and Kayla. Holton Catholic has been hovering in the top ten for the whole eight years we've been reporting. Simcoe County's fought its way to the top up to number ten. I was just thrilled to see that. Same same question to you. What do you think has been the key to success?
So again, same as Steve, we have centralised control of the building automation system. So we've we've had fully controlled schools for a number of years. But during Covid, we actually centralised the control of the building automation systems. So we have two centralised staff that are managing and maintaining those systems as far as scheduling goes. Custodians no longer have control to do any scheduling or inputting of permits and things like that. So that's really given us an opportunity to make sure that our runtimes are a lot tighter and are sticking to the board runtime goals. And it also like during Covid, so that happened during Covid and during Covid, it also gave us an opportunity to see our schools in the unoccupied mode and what was running when it shouldn't be. And so our building automation technologists were able to review all of the schools and really clean things up a lot. So that I would say those are the the two biggest reasons why we've been able to climb up the list over the last two years. And I suspect that you'll continue to see us in the top ten next year too.
I'm quite sure. So just to, it's my second question was around who has authority to set the scheduling of the HVAC systems? It sounds Kayla and Steve, like in both your boards, you manage that centrally. We don't have caretakers or people within the schools with the ability to override that, or is that not the case?
That's correct. It's done centrally by our supervisor of building automation and our building automation specialist. They set the schedules for the schools based on either normal occupied mode or P A days permitting, et cetera.
And Steve, the same with you?
Yeah, exactly the same as Kayla. We have a building operations manager that looks after the scheduling. But as a as a team on the on the capital and operation side, we we kind of all work together and share our knowledge in order to be able to, Covid was quite a challenge, as we all know, when it came to scheduling and ventilation. So it took a team, but certainly day to day, we have a specialist, yes.
And Katie, you're our our new rising star. You're about where Kayla was a few years ago. Same same question there is what do you attribute success to and who does have the power to set the schedules, the operating schedules of the HVAC systems in your schools?
Yeah, thank you. We are optimistic that we will continue rising as well. Kayla and Steve and I, we were talking beforehand, we've all been through a number of years and making efforts at our various boards. And one of the obstacles, Kayla and Steve mentioned the importance of the centralised building automation system. Grand Erie is very similar. We've had a system in place for decades. However, it is only a tool that can be fully optimised if you're actually monitoring it on a continuous basis and utilising it to its full potential. Grand Erie at this point does not have a dedicated BAS technician or staff member. So that is where a gap that we have definitely recognised that we will try to fill in the coming years to just to improve our energy performance. But I do believe at Grand Erie that it's been a very collaborative approach in the last few years, making the importance of lowering our GHGs and having more efficient schools among all the divisions and departments. So really taking an organic or holistic approach and making sure that all various staff and stakeholders are involved in design, maintenance and operations of our buildings. So I think that's very important and we're now working together and keeping the energy efficiency on our mind when we're doing different projects. Even for example, if we're doing a roofing project, then let's make sure that we're increasing installation where that wouldn't have been the case of the priority in previous years.
Let me let me push a little on on the comment that you don't have a dedicated BAS person, but the it's fairly clear that the boards that are at the top, it's a lot of work staying on top of a bunch of schools. Would you would you want to? And if so, how would you make the business case to your organisation that, look, we can save all this money? We we need to add resources. Would that work within Grand Erie?
Absolutely, and our team has grown. We do have an energy and sustainability officer. And we made that case historically, even through obtaining incentives is a great way to justify and build that business case. So it's worked in the past. So we're optimistic it'll work in the future as well.
And Katia, can you kind of let us have any any questions you've seen so far that we can we can insert here before we move on to planning?
Yes, just a quick reminder to everybody to please use the Q and A function. If you're asking questions for the panelists, they they actually do get saved and we can record them for afterwards.
Sorry to interrupt, Katia, if you put them in the chat, then they get lost. So
Yeah, in the chat, they don't get saved.
If you put them in the chat already, ask the same question in the Q and A because that's what will make it to the table.
Thank you, Ian. Katie, I think, yes, you marked off Richard Christie's question about
Sorry, so at Grand Erie, the the automation, because we don't have a dedicated technician, it does sit in facility services, the programming. And it is with myself and the Energy and Sustainability Officer. So schools do not have individual access to be able to change stop points or program any BAS.
Thank you, Katie. And we had the question about the providers that the three panelists use at their boards, the the BAS providers.
Kayla?
We use reliable controls.
And and Steve?
We're about a sixty forty split between Johnson and Siemens.
And Katie, your your BAS provider?
Yep, Schneider.
Is that the same platform across all your schools, Katie?
Correct.
Okay, interesting. That's another, I think on another one of these webinars, be interesting to explore the issues around one or multiple providers in that area. Any any other questions that you've seen?
Yes, so while we're on that topic, so we received another kind of more detailed questions about BAS providers. But I think we've mostly answered that. I guess the part of it where there is a split, do you aim to consolidate, for example, for Steve?
Yeah, we have tried mostly unsuccessfully when we are doing major renewal and refurbishment projects because usually the school that we are doing the project on is either Johnson or Siemens. Makes it tough for the other one to kind of be competitive. So it tends to kind of stick down those lines and will likely be that way for the foreseeable future for us, unfortunately. But they're in in the sense of operation and how we you know, we can control things, they are quite similar, even though they have different paths to resolution if we have issues. Certainly, there is no appreciable difference in operation or energy savings between the two.
Thank you, Steve.
Actually, that's interesting. So you, have you actually benchmarked your schools to see against the two providers? That would be a great competition to set up between them, which 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 provider will deliver the most efficient schools? Have you have you looked to see if
It's a it's a great question, Ian. It's a tough one because you kind of got to have two very similar schools to look at as well, like size and that. But we we do in the sense of we some of our, we have a lot of clone elementary schools and some, most are Johnson, a couple are Siemens. And yeah, they are, they are very similar within the parameters that can be controlled by the BAS.
Fascinating. Anything else to pick up at this stage, Katia?
Yeah, and just one more on the BAS. So a question. Can you comment on any operational savings that were made possible by BAS aside from energy savings? So for example, reduce service truck roll, reduce custodian and physical visits to schools? And if you know in terms of the magnitude of the proportion of such savings?
Kayla, thoughts on that?
Well, I suppose there would be savings as far as custodial time spent on the building automation because we're not having individual custodians do the scheduling changes. So that certainly, I don't know that that would necessarily have like a cost savings. But from a workload perspective, for sure, it's something that's been taken off of their plate that they don't have to focus on, so they can focus on their other tasks in the school. But that did get loaded then on to our building automation specialists. So it was just sort of a movement of responsibility. And other than that, I can't think of anything specific off the top of my head, but if something comes to mind, I will share it with you.
And and Steve and then Katie, I want to come to you to begin the conversation about planning, the ECDM plans that are put together and what do you think the most important elements are there? But Steve, have you been able to quantify any operational savings coming out of your your approach to BAS?
It's a it's a tough one for me to answer because it's been It's a, it's a tough one for me to answer because it's been so universal at Holton Catholic for so long, including well before I started. So we didn't know a time without it.
Okay.
You know, for better, for, much for better on my part, but that's, I, we haven't really known a, a time when there were, was no local controls or a non-centralized approach to BAS.
So let's, let's step along to energy plan. Yes, go ahead.
Before we move on there, one initiative that Grand Erie has undertaken on that topic. We're fortunate that we have been able to automate our building automation to connect and communicate with our community use module. So that buildings are also auto scheduled for permit times as well as making the connections with our security system to ensure that buildings are not operating if no one is in the building. They've left early for any reason and it would be typically scheduled on.
That, that is terrific. I'd say we're seeing more and more evidence of just how big, especially the natural gas savings are when, when you get the scheduling tightened down. So that's good to know. And staying with you, if I could, Katie, you're putting, as we said, the finishing touches to, to your energy plan right now?
Yep, absolutely. It's been submitted. It's being reviewed and goes to board next week. So primarily, as I mentioned before, just the collaboration and ensuring that we have multiple voices being represented on our plan so that this isn't just, you know, the energy division who's creating these goals. But we're having voices from various stakeholders in the different divisions. So I think that was a priority. Sitting down, be able to collaborate and come up with a plan together.
And you, you saw the, a few slides ago, the survey from 2023 where the the question, this technical aspects of the plan and organizational aspect. So the technical is what do we need to do? And the organizational, which is how are we going to get it done? Which of those two? I mean, it's a, it's an impossible question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Which, which of those two do you think is the biggest challenge for Grand Erie?
Good question. Definitely a difficult one. Operationally, we are a smaller or medium sized board. So at times that does make things easier. However, that's, you know, older buildings, aging infrastructure and all sorts of different obstacles as far as technical, so.
And you've been able to weave all that together in your plan in a way that you think is going to be actionable and you can achieve the goals that you've set within the next five years.
Absolutely. And likely being a little more aggressive this time around than in previous years.
Yeah, good. Yeah, we need to be. That's right. As they, as Dr. Valance says, running out of time. Kayla, same question to you. What do you think is the, the most important, the biggest and the most challenging part of the plan you're assembling now to make sure it can be actioned and implemented?
So I think our approach in the past has been appropriate and works well for us in that we keep our ECDM plans open ended and not, not too specific. So it's a goal without specifying buildings or specific tasks that we want to achieve, but rather like, you know, energy intensity goals and using similar metrics that you have used in the sustainable schools, top quartile, things like that. That has worked really well for us to give us flexibility as funding is available. You know, or just the, the state of the world, like during COVID, putting, putting a pin in all of these types of projects. So I think there's definitely been periods of time where, you know, our improvements have slowed or stopped or we've even slipped backwards for a time. But we're always looking for new opportunities and like participating in the P four P project right now has been really exciting for us to kind of start to make some leaps and bounds forward in our natural gas savings. And yeah, so I'm just looking forward to doing similar, but going forward. And yeah, the challenges are always about the funding piece of it, but hopefully the story will continue to speak for itself.
Sounds great. And Steve, closing thoughts to you around the planning that you have going forward over the next five years. What is the most important for you? What's the most challenging? What are the thoughts as this year's number one? Pressure for next year? What are the thoughts you'd leave with everybody on this call today that they should put into their planning to help them be successful?
Well, and I, I would just say and echo what Kayla said, our plan tends to be a little bit more open ended as well and sort of strategy focused and with, with definitely with some intensity goals and that to shoot for. I think the biggest challenge for us will be the revolution in how we are looking at carbon mitigation and that in our schools. That the plan will chart, the ideas for this plan to chart a course for us on that, whether it's to make the first steps towards net zero. But that I think is going to be our biggest challenge because it is something that is going to require paradigm shift for us and how we design and operate our buildings. And also that idea that it could come with operational increases in costs, right? Electricity costs a lot more than natural gas. So there will be some focus on that. And I'm, and you know, there are capital and operating are different worlds, but that will have to kind of be merged together for everybody to understand what the, you know, implications are there, both as far as, you know, the help to the environment, but also that it could result in operational increases to the board. So I see that as being a big challenge going forward for us. But something that I think that this five year plan will chart at least our first steps towards.
You're absolutely right. We're in the beginning of an energy transition. There's some hard decisions coming ahead. And I, I'm pretty confident your three boards are going to carry us through as always. Thanks. Sincere thanks to all three of you for, for sharing so openly like what you're up to. I got a feeling it's not the last time we'll be knocking on the doors of, of each of you to again, share your insights, share your perspectives. But if you can hear the, the virtual round of applause in the background, that's on behalf of everybody. Thanks for, for, for again, sharing ideas, insights, thoughts today. And I, I found the, the input very helpful. Katia, can we move on to just the last few slides here as we come towards the end of our hour?
Absolutely. Just wanted to mention, we have quite a bit of unanswered questions. So we'll be sure to get our panelists' input for that, then we'll circulate them after the webinar.
So talked about call to action. We began with that. Let's end with that. So, and we've, we've grouped our audience in, 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 in four areas. So there's a lot of Ontario school boards on there. Again, thanks for, for faithfully joining us each year to hear the story. And we enjoy the conversations obviously between these meetings. But our, our respectful suggestion to Ontario school boards is despite everything that gets in the way, despite all the demands on your time, the climate crisis is real and respectfully asking, make the commitment. And a starting point can be every one of your boards has sustainable schools, energy targets, which are as good as any in terms of what's achievable over the next five years. And our invitation and request to every one of you boards is contact, contact Katia. We can spend half an hour on a call with you. We can share your school by school and whole board data, what the targets are. We can talk about what other boards are doing. We can share insights, share ideas. But if everybody meets the targets that we've set, we'll be reporting five years from now on a thirty six percent reduction in emissions. That's a noble cause. So that's our suggestion to Ontario school boards in terms of taking action and working together for other jurisdictions, please reach out to, to Katia, contact us. Let's run your data. Let's show you where you stand on those. We can adjust for weather differences very comfortably. But the starting point is this collective view of data and performance and benchmarking and target savings potential drives the business case, drives the technical direction and so on. So please take the time to contact us and let's get you in the mix. No commitment. Let's just start off with understanding what your data are saying. If you're the most efficient board we've ever seen, we're going to love you and we're going to steal all your ideas. And if you're not, we're going to offer, I think, some useful insights and recommendations on how to move forward. So message to school boards, consider taking action with us, working together with us. Let's move this agenda forward together. And next slide please. And with industry, and you'll see the first bullet on each one of them is it's make the commitment, not just, and again, I say this with great respect. I know many of you and your hearts, but this commitment is kind of going beyond selling products and services, which you're exceptionally good at, to selling performance, to working with your school board clients and your prospective school board clients to help them improve. You saw that biggest gap identified last year was resources. Your companies have resources. Find ways of opening the conversation, reaching out to your school board clients and prospective clients. And begin the conversation about what is your sustainable schools target for this year? Again, it's a good number. It gets us to thirty six percent and it's equitable. All schools are treated equally. Start that conversation about how can you help them improve performance? And ideally that leads to mutually beneficial, really substantive progress towards the top of our benchmark chart. And we'll see you showing up in future years. With governments and utility companies, we know there's a number of you on the call. Again, I'll suggest is use the data. In terms of setting policy, designing programs, doing your periodic estimation of achievable savings potential. We would argue the old ways don't work and you've got empirical data galore that can be used to do a better job of developing policy, setting targets and designing programs. Reach out to you. Let's continue the conversations we're already having with many of you to move this agenda forward. Final slide, I think. Stay in touch. I'm Ian Jarvis, the Executive Director of Climate Challenge Network. Katia Osakian has been fielding questions and is the Program Manager. And Heather Bell is our Director of Program and Partnership Development, the many of our government utility and, and industry colleagues are working with. Stay in touch, reach out. Make the commitment and let's tackle this, the, the goals and targets and challenges of climate change mitigation. Let's tackle those together. Thank you all for joining us. Have a wonderful day.